Okay.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Just move to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call of members.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Hirsack.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich. Trustee, one say is excused.
Yes. Let's see, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 13th meeting?
Some more.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And a motion to approve the meeting of February 27th?
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, oh, sorry, backup.
Joel can't approve those.
Right.
He was absent.
For the 27th?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one.
Yeah, that's the next one.
Oh, I don't have the ones from the 27th.
It was.
I'm sorry.
Was it on the 27th?
I have it.
That's the other thing.
I have it in my hand, but maybe.
It was a budget workshop.
I've got February.
Yeah, it was the budget workshop.
Okay, I didn't have that one.
Oh, I don't have that one either, I'm sorry.
We want to, I can bypass that and just do it next. I can make sure he gets the copy for us.
Do you want me to do that, or do you want me to photocopy right now and give it to them? I mean, doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
What's the board want to do? Want copies now, or do you want to wait on it? Who's the budget workshop?
That's okay. I'm fine with that.
Hold on it?
Is it just one page?
Double sided.
Yeah, if we could do it and get it over with, that'd probably be a good thing.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, I just don't want to forget about it.
No, I just, I'm sorry, I apologize, I thought we were talking about the March 8th.
So did I.
Okay, don't feel so bad enough.
Sorry.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine, it's unusual that we had three meetings, but, yeah.
We missed each other.
We did.
And I was looking just to make sure I didn't have it.
Yeah, I never remember doing it.
Well, while we're making those copies, we probably could have a motion to approve the March, was it 8th?
Yes.
Yes.
Meeting, we have a motion.
Some more.
And a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. And then we'll get this one.
Thank you.
Why not? I think just what I wrote down, we.
I just wrote the motion.
We approved up the March 8th one, she jotted that down.
Okay.
Okay, let me give you a minute to look this over.
Oh, this was the night with the truck, okay.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. And then the budget.
Oh, and then, and then I.
This was a draft.
I guess I should try to give it to you.
I know, and then I think I just thought that it was, had been handed out, and then I didn't.
Usually I do, once I, you guys are okay with that.
Yeah.
You.
Yeah, so a little, a little bit of that definitely was my responsibility. I guess I just thought, oh, I have it, I guess everyone does. All right, so I think we have a motion on the floor for this.
Yeah, I did make a motion.
And Joel seconded it.
Yeah, all right. Any corrections? I don't want to rush anyone. Ready to vote?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question for, for members of the community. As we have no one here, we will dispense with that. Report from the code enforcement officer. We have Chris's report. He's still, he's still in pretty busy even though it's winter. Uh, he did it, go to some training last week also. I guess that actually wasn't a month of March, not February. Any questions on his report?
Just any idea when that, um, structural analysis might happen? Or is that gonna be held off till spring on the 9th property? Probably spring.
I think it's gonna be spring. Yeah.
I'm just worried with heavy snow, wet snow.
I know.
Wind.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, I agree.
Just that front piece up on the top that worries me.
Yeah, you just can see right through it.
Yeah. I don't think much is going on, probably.
I can't imagine that there is. And I don't know if what's up there was compromised with the fire at all, either.
Right.
A report from the mayor. Here's my report. Good evening and welcome to the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees meeting. We are all looking forward to spring, but until that time, the plow drivers will continue to keep the roads and sidewalks safe. I'd like to thank them all for their hard work. Spring, speaking of spring, we did receive a small grant to establish a sensory garden at the children's garden. Thanks to Stewarts for that. The purpose of a sensory garden is to promote learning about the environment through the five senses. So we will have colorful plants as well as fragrant, fragrant flowers. Wind chimes will be added for sound and a bird feeder to encourage our feathered friends to stop by. The children's garden will become a unique welcoming area for all to enjoy. There are some upcoming events to put on your calendars. The village election is March 21st, that's next Tuesday, from noon until 9:00. Joy DeMars is going to talk about her book Nine Days a Soldier on March 30th at 6:30 PM. The April events include International Slow Art Day on April 15th from 1:00 to 3:00. And our traditional Arbor Day celebration that we've had for the past few years is on April 29th. If anyone has ideas for presentations that you would like to have offered, let me know. I am also working with the AARP Rural Lab, which brings people together from around the country who live in rural areas like ours, so we can share ideas. The first meeting via Zoom was very informative, and I will let you know what I learned from these community leaders. One point that is stressed is the importance of making communities designed for all ages. I welcome your ideas on how the Village of Champlain might bring more opportunities for all age groups. As always, thanks to everyone for making this village a good place to live. Thank you. Reports from the trustees. Kim?
I really don't have much, other than, um, the reports are starting to come in for the water board. So that continues to be an ongoing project. We'll meet again in May.
Okay.
So, it's moving along.
Yeah, thanks for all your work on that, too. Chuck?
I don't have a lot, but, uh, just, uh, one note, that the Knights of Columbus have agreed to do something for 150th celebration. Put on some kind of food thing, and, uh, yeah. So that'll be going on, not sure exactly what. And, uh, that's, I haven't given thoughts about ideas for that celebration.
Yeah.
But that's in the process, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Joel?
Uh, I just wanted to say thank you and, and good work, I suppose, to the, the village road crews and the village employees. Had a little bit of a snafu in early morning a couple of weeks back, and kind of went a little bit off the, into the ditch. And luckily enough, it was like the response team was there, and everybody was able to help me out and get me out of the ditch in no time at all, so can't think of a better place to, uh, to go off the road, I suppose, so. Thank you very much, Jimmy, Mike, everyone else who was there. Keeping the roads clean and then keeping them safe, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great.
Good amount of work.
You were, you were safe and sound, right?
Oh, I was fine, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, report, report from the clerk treasurer.
Um, everyone has their extensive revenue reports for February. Getting down a little wire.
Yeah. We are.
It's like countdown.
What's that?
It's like countdown.
Uh, should we?
I'm thinking we should.
Do the transfers first?
Um, well, the only thing is, is some of the transfers, um, we wouldn't be doing unless we approving the warrant.
Oh, true.
So maybe we should do the warrant first.
Okay.
And then approve the transfers that need to be done.
Okay.
So, we have a warrant with additional invoices of sixty-two thousand, sixty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents for a total warrant of eighty-five thousand two eighty-one ninety-two.
And a big portion of that is the truck.
Right.
So may I have a motion to approve the, um, warrant with the added invoices? So. Is there a second?
I just have a quick question. The, the, uh, the third line down, the nine six XV two SS, that, that is the plow?
Yes, I believe that is.
Okay.
Which one?
Oh, the ten thousand three oh five?
Yeah.
Yes, that is the plow, yeah.
Because they, they wasn't sure themselves.
So let's get the second, so we can discuss it.
Second.
Okay, thanks. So, yeah, so that's the plow. And then there's the additional for the wheel panel, the mud flap, and, and the installation of that. So that's a big portion right there. Other, other questions about any of these invoices?
I did see one thing that's kind of close, is the dumpster. Well, you know, it's gonna be kind of close. Transfer money for that? That's a monthly charge?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, that's all I, that's all I got.
Well, if it goes on, that will be next month's transfer.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So it probably will be next month's transfer.
Yeah.
So did the, the cost go up during the year, is that why we maybe were short in the budget of it?
For, for the dumpster?
Yeah.
He said, it's, it has gone up because part of that is fuel.
Yeah.
It actually went down. That's right, you get a fuel charge.
Yeah, yeah, surcharge, yeah.
But it actually went down two, two dollars from last.
It's.
Last.
They're never the same, it's just.
No, even your home one is never the same.
No, no.
No. Ours, our, ours is different every month.
Your, your garbage pickup you were talking about? Does it, does it depend on how many days are in the month?
I have no idea, but it's never the same every month.
Who do you have?
It varies, because, uh, it varies by a little bit. Every month.
Oh, okay.
EMS does, too.
Yeah, probably the fuel.
Right, it is.
It probably is fuel.
Yeah.
I'm surprised you don't pay for fuel.
Well, it's in their, it's in their costs for sure, you know.
But it's called a surcharge.
Good that you don't have it.
I don't even, well, yes, I do, downtown I do. Any other questions?
No.
Roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Hirsack.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
So now we have the transfers.
Yeah, to cover the, so we have, um, I think the two from fund balance we should be separate. So, to A 1420.1 law, five hundred dollars from A 9010.8 retirement. To 1490.2 Public Works Administration 210, from retirement A 9010.8, two hundred and ten dollars. To A 1989.4 Shared Services, fifty dollars from A 9010.8 Retirement, fifty dollars. To A 5142.2 Snow Removal Equipment, ten thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. From A 5112.2 Road Construction, that's for the new Fisher plow and the accessories. To A 5142.2, two thousand dollars. From A 5142.4 Snow Removal Equipment, contractual, two thousand dollars, that's for the snow plow repairs. And then we had G 1420.1 Law, eight hundred dollars, from G 1910.8 Retirement. We'll do the two from fund balance, that one, together.
Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the ones that Juanita just read?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Hirsack.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
Then we have two transfers from fund balance. One to F 8340.1 Transmission and Distribution Personal Services, eighteen thousand dollars. From F 909 Fund Balance, eighteen thousand dollars. This is to cover their wages till the end of the year. Last year it was fifteen thousand, this year it's eighteen. When we have water breaks, it, it really hammers out that budget. Then we have to G, um, 8010.2 Sewer Administration Equipment, forty thousand three seventy-five. From G 909, forty thousand three seventy-five, to cover the cost of the new pickup truck.
May I have a motion?
Some more.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on these two? Roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Con- Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Hirsack.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
Um, and we also have one bill to pay out of our main water line repair project, Barton La Judas, for seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents.
May I have a motion?
Some more.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Hirsack.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. A report from the superintendent. He left his report here.
What's that?
Where did you do that? Saying we could. We did that first before we did the transfers.
So we have been having, um, many alarms going off at the water plant, and, um, they are working, trying to get Wigan to come in and help fix this. Some of it might be some sensors and some things that are wearing out, and some of it's probably software, but they are working well, Kevin's working on this well, and Mike and Robert, um, so they will, they will get it solved, but they have had quite a few alarms. I don't know if you have any other questions?
No, he said he was looking for a person to spray in bed liner.
Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, let's, let's do that.
Oh, you have a cost on that?
Yes, I, yeah, I do.
Okay.
Six seventy-nine, but at first, are there any other questions on his report? Nope. Okay, so I just wanted to say, um, on camera, thanks to, um, all the guys for all their hard work. Really, really appreciate it, as I know the people in the village do too. Yes, he left a, am I the only one that has this?
Yeah.
I did make copies of it.
Okay, it's from Yipes. Do you all want a copy? Or can I just read it? It's for an underrail black liner. It's, it's, um, six seventy-nine. And, uh, yeah, it's that, it's that bed liner, that's brand bed liner. What were you saying, Juanita, about he maybe could get?
He's been talking to, he's been talking to Bailey's to see if Bailey will do it versus us, whatever, point for, yeah, since Bailey says it, it might be a little bit cheaper than if we were, you know.
So approve it up to this amount?
Up to that amount.
And then he's going to try and get it for a little bit less possibly, but this, we have this correct. Okay. So may I have a motion to approve up to six hundred and seventy-nine dollars for a spray in bed liner?
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Hirsack.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
I was gonna say, trusty Chuck.
We're informal here.
I'm sorry, correspondence.
Um, he had one more thing from here.
Yeah, the wet wall.
Oh, he doesn't, I don't have that.
I don't have that either.
No, I don't have that, so.
Okay, so, I then have a question.
Yeah.
So, on the additional warrant, there's wheel panel mud flap install of four seventy-five.
Then that must be the bill. Cause he asked me if he gave it to me, and I said, yes, he had, I didn't realize it was already on there.
So then.
So then it's already been approved on the warrant.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yeah. I guess because I saw it on the warrant, I didn't think about it here, listed here.
Well, that's why I wanted to make sure that it wasn't two different.
Wasn't something else, right? No, he mentioned about the bed liner, that's all he had mentioned to me.
So we already paid for that.
So that's on the warrant.
Okay, I just.
Good point.
Wanted to be sure it wasn't something else.
Good point, yeah, because who knows, it could be something else. Okay.
Correspondence?
Correspondence.
Quarterly franchise fees from Charter Communications, letter in support of Kaylee Metmeyer for Arts Council Grant, Northern New York Water Works Conference Water, Wastewater Seminar Registration, New York Rural Water Annual Technical Training Workshop Registration, Wastewater Credit Request for Valerie Daniels, JCEO Monthly Report, and correspondence from Stewarts regarding the Holliday Match Grant. Which we got six hundred dollars.
Yes.
Oh, I was gonna say, I didn't have that.
We, uh, we, I didn't get it either.
No, it's what I was talking about in, in my report, too. New business, um, elections, as I mentioned, elections are a week from tomorrow. Polls are open between noon and 9:00, I encourage village residents to come and vote. Exercise your, your right to vote. And, um, that's about it for elections. We have a wastewater credit request from 28 Locust Street. I believe this does fit our requirements. So Mary has done, done the math, thank you, Mary. Uh, and it would be a sewer credit for seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty cents. May I have a motion, please, then we can discuss it.
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion or, or questions?
Well, Juanita has proof that it didn't go into.
Yeah, yeah. Seems to fit.
Fits the criteria.
All right, roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Hirsack.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
There are two conferences coming up, um, that Kevin would like to go to. There is, um, the Water Works Conference is on April 26th. That is in Canton. That's just a one-day conference, the cost for that is sixty dollars per person. Actually, it, it, I, I didn't talk to anyone else, but we might approve for up to two people to go, because we do have two people working at the water plant, so it's just going to be beneficial, and it's just a one-day conference. I didn't ask anyone else if they wanted to go.
Do they get credit for that?
They, they, they get, yes, they get credit.
Six, six hours.
Six hours. Um, now, Kevin wouldn't get credit yet because he doesn't have his license, but still the knowledge and the training is going to be beneficial. So my recommendation is to approve up to two at sixty per person. And then we'll see if only, I, I know Kevin definitely wants to go, but we'll see if Robert would want to go too.
So, would, do we have a vehicle that they would take, or do, if they would take?
Yeah, that's true, would we have to approve the?
We would have to approve to pay.
Can we just say, and transportation if needed?
Yeah.
Can we do it that way?
Mileage.
Yeah.
Mileage is.
And mileage if needed.
For one vehicle.
Yeah, for one vehicle, yeah, yeah. So may I have a motion for that, please?
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
So, is it mileage and meals, will they, or?
Do they get?
Well, they get, it says, a breakfast lunch is included.
So they shouldn't need it.
And it ends at?
Four thirty.
Four thirty.
Four thirty.
So they'd be back at six thirty.
I don't know, just.
I, I can't, I, I can't remember how that works on the meals.
Well, well, we have another meeting before this anyway.
Yeah, but, but at least if we approve this, we can get this sent in to save this pot.
Two per, two people plus mileage. Okay.
So, once Kevin, I just, cause we've now, in the discussion. Once he gets his license, will these credit hours be able to be applied to that?
Probably not. Unfortunately. I mean, it's something we could ask, my guess is no.
Yeah, exactly.
But the triane will still be very beneficial.
Oh, absolutely.
He actually is the one that brought this to my attention, because he, he wanted to go. Roll call.
Trustee Tremblay.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Hirsack.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Okay. And then the other one is a New York Rural Water Association, and this one is in Lake Placid, and it's a three-day, uh, training workshop, May 22nd through May 24th. The cost is, for full registration for one person is three hundred and forty dollars. I don't know yet if he would want to stay there or travel back and forth. So I'm not sure about the lodging or the mileage.
It's a hundred and twenty-nine dollars per, per, per room, per night.
Yeah. I guess we can do the math and go to, up to a certain amount. Or approve the, approve the registration and then approve the lodging at our next meeting.
Figure out what he wants to do.
I mainly want to get these sent in so that they have a spot, because I know they fill up quickly.
Well, especially the block of rooms will fill quick.
Correct, correct.
I mean, those, those go immediately.
Could be two nights, like, it'll all six hundred if you don't talk about gas or anything like that, but.
Personally, I wouldn't want to drive back an hour and a half.
Not long.
Oh, I did.
At, at that.
Well, I, at one time when I went to conferences, I did a.
I know many people that do that, Ross's point.
So it's two nights?
Yeah, it would be, it would, yeah, it'd be two nights, Monday and a Tuesday.
So your room is two fifty-eight.
And then three forty for the registration.
So five, six, six, yeah.
And, um, meals?
They must include meals.
If full registration is breakfast and lunch.
So your dinner.
Maybe stay as he needs to.
Breakfast and lunch, Tuesday and Wednesday. And then additional breakfast and lunch tickets are available to purchase in advance. Dinner's on your own.
Yeah.
It's pretty hard to come up with the total, how do you wanna do this?
So you could, if he's going to.
This isn't till May, anyway.
No, but I just want to be able to get the registration.
Oh, what I'm saying, well, yeah, we can, we can approve the.
So you approve him to stay, one person, that's three forty. And then two nights is two fifty-eight, so it's five ninety-eight. Plus meals.
Plus meals.
Mileage to go.
And mileage.
Mileage and meals.
Okay, so could I have a motion to approve six hundred dollars plus meals plus mileage for the New York Rural Water Association?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
And then we also need to set the budget public hearing for April third, twenty twenty-three, so I need a motion to set that up.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
What date again was that?
Um, fourth, April third.
April third, Monday, that's our organizational meeting.
What time?
Uh, we usually do those at seven, so let's say seven. That's the long meeting, anyway. No, that's fine, that should be fine, that, that meets all of our guidelines for having these, having the public hearing.
Well, this is public hearings, it's a, oh, not a meeting, okay, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Oh, no, the public hearing, yeah, the public hearing.
Public hearing, if anybody.
Yeah, good.
For the budget.
For the budget.
Yeah, for the budget.
So we have to approve by budget, yeah.
Right. I have nothing on the old business, does anyone have any old business? Nope. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Seven o'clock.
Thank you, everyone.
Seven oh one, actually.
See, she's making it quick this month, because next month will be the killer.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I know, I know.
That April meeting is so long.
It's just long.
It's all the resolutions.